Five seconds, okay.
Yep.
I would unmute and start recording.
Please unmute the chamber so we can hear you.
I was just about to. I know. Why isn't it working?
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, March 5th. I'd like to, at 6:00 PM, I'd like to bring the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start with a determination, a quorum. Mr. Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Michael Flick.
Here.
Pat Phillips.
Here.
Rob Pierce.
Here.
Dan Lazareski.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Here.
Lynda Kennedy.
Here.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. If you all will please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Appreciate it.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands.
Stands. One should undercut. In the republic of justice. Just as we stand.
All right, can we have an ethics law announcements, please?
Yeah, okay. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here tonight, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please remember to abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under your planning commission bylaws, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. I'm also going to go ahead and read the Zoom instructions for providing public comment. This meeting is held in the county commission chambers. It's also being held via Zoom. To attend this meeting via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar using the link found on the first page of tonight's agenda. You can also join the meeting by typing zoom.us into your computer browser, click "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406. You can also join the meeting by telephone only by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406 and press pound. For those of you wishing to provide public comment via Zoom, log into the Zoom webinar and utilize the raise hand feature during any public comment period. To provide public comment via telephone only, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd, can we please have the appeal procedure?
Yeah, most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision be an appeal that is reduced to writing, filed with the secretary of the planning commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-3610 for more information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. Do we have any general public comment?
Yes, in chambers, I have Gay Hollenberger.
For general, or is that for 9B?
I apologize, no public comment for general.
No, okay.
I have no hands raised on Zoom either.
Wonderful, all right, thank you. All right, that moves us on to item number six, approval of the March 6th agenda. Can I get a motion?
Chair, Commissioner Doncic, I motion approval.
Commissioner Lazareski, second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. All right, that brings us to number seven, approval of the February 6th draft minutes. Everybody get a chance to look at it. Do we have any changes, or can I get a motion?
Commissioner?
I move we approve the minutes of the February 6th meeting.
As written?
As written.
Okay.
Commissioner Lazareski?
Wait, can you please state your name for the record?
This is Lynda Kennedy.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. That brings us on to item eight. It's a consent item. Mr. Lloyd, can you read that, please?
Yeah, this is special use permit, case number MPR 12890 for the Mustang Quarry. For hearing discussion and possible action to approve the five-year review of conditions of approval for aggregate operations for MPR 12890 Mustang Quarry. The purpose of this review is to examine the conditions of approval to ensure that they adequately provide for compatibility between aggregate operations and the surrounding land uses in accordance with Washoe County Code 110-33240. The development code requires that a date be established for the next scheduled review of conditions of approval. As you had indicated, Mr. Chair, this is a consent item, and if the planning commission wishes, they can pull this off of consent and have a presentation and discussion, or go straight to a motion.
Okay, do you guys need a presentation, or are we good with a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion if you guys are good with it.
Commissioner Doncic, I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
As written.
Got a second?
Lynda Kennedy, seconds.
All right, I got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Mm-hmm.
That brings us on to number nine, abandonment case number WAB 240001, Cote and Stevens abandonment. Mr. Lloyd, can you please announce?
Sure, this is for hearing discussion and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in two access easements, which include the portion of Casey Ranch Road and Winters Creek Lane, lying within parcels identified as APN 04605142 and 04605137, except for a 20-foot emergency access turnaround easement that falls partially within the subject access easement and will be separately recorded. Representing Washoe County is our newest senior planner, Kat Oakley.
Welcome, Kat. Florries yours, go ahead.
All right, Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. As Trevor said, this is the Cote and Stevens abandonment request. Oh. So this request is for the abandonment of two access easements on two properties, one at 2305 Kelly Canyon Road and one at 1435 Casey Ranch Drive. And they're highlighted in blue there. You can see they're right next to Highway or Interstate 580 in Washoe Valley and off Kelly Canyon Road. Specifically, the request is to abandon a 50-foot access easement for Winters Creek Lane and a 50-foot access easement for Casey Ranch Drive excluding that 20-foot emergency turnaround easement. Here is a vicinity map that zoomed out a bit, so you can see that the subject properties are very close to Davis Creek Park, directly north of them. Both properties are about five acres in size, and the other parcels abutting the two easements that are proposed to be abandoned are developed with single-family dwellings or are public lands, either county lands or federal lands. Some history on this is that this exact request actually came before the planning commission and was approved in 2010, but the official order of abandonment was never recorded, and so it was not finalized. And so it's back before you today. Here is a site plan with the highlighted yellow areas showing the proposed abandoned areas. Two, the two roadways that these easements are for are also indicated on the site plan, and you can see that they're already developed. They are developed within existing easements on other properties, and they are currently serving all properties that they would be intended to serve with the easements that are being proposed to be abandoned. So those roadways would continue to exist and continue to exist in easements, just in other easements, making these easements that are proposed to be abandoned not necessary for the roadway system. Some specific evaluation, so the Winters Creek Lane easement is there on the northern portion of both parcels, and that roadway is developed to the north on the adjacent parcels. It serves those parcels, it does not serve the two subject parcels, and so the proposed abandonment area is not utilized for that roadway. Casey Ranch Road is currently developed up to the edge of both of these properties. It is not developed through all the way to Winters Creek Lane. On the ground right now, there are essentially two driveways that branch off the end of that roadway, so it provides the necessary access to all the surrounding parcels, but it's not as necessary for connectivity for it to extend through. And then that emergency turnaround is highlighted. That will remain to facilitate emergency access. Twelve agencies reviewed this and indicated no concerns, specifically engineering looked at this and didn't indicate any concerns about the roadway system. I also just want to mention that Parks and Open Space reviewed this. One of those easements does connect to the regional park, but they've indicated that it's not necessary for any of their plans, and they are okay to have it be abandoned. And this also was sent to the Forest Service because they've got some adjoining land, but they did not indicate any concerns either. Seven parcels were noticed. Those are all the parcels that touch these easements. And staff can make all three required findings. This is detailed in pages seven through eight of your staff report, and they're on the screen there. And so because of that, we are recommending approval with conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment in chambers for this item.
No public comment on Zoom as well.
Okay, and there's no applicant. You're the applicant. Does the applicant wish to speak?
One of the applicants is present but does not have a presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have any discussion or motion? If we don't have any discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Phillips, I have a motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 24-0001 for Cote and Stevens with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20.
Commissioner Doncic, I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. That brings us on to nine B, or, yeah, nine C, or B. Tentative subdivision map case number WTM 23-001, Lerner Lemon. Mr. Lloyd, can you please announce?
Sure. For hearing discussion and possible action to approve a tentative subdivision map to allow the subdivision of one parcel totaling 19.926 acres into an 85-lot common open space residential development with lots ranging in size from 4,500 to 7,750 square feet, and for major grading of 19.926 acres with 20,000 cubic yards of excavated material and 55,000 cubic yards of fill material with 35,000 cubic yards of that fill material being imported. Representing Washoe County in this matter, once again, Senior Planner Kat Oakley.
Kat, Florries yours.
All right, Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. This is the Lerner Lemon tentative map. All right, this request is for a tentative subdivision map totaling 19.92 acres into an 85-lot common open space subdivision with lots ranging in size from 4,500 square feet to 7,750 square feet. This request also has a major grading component, which is for disturbance of the entire subject site, about 20 acres, for 20,000 cubic yards of cut, 55,000 cubic yards of fill, with 35,000 of those cubic yards being imported materials. Here is a vicinity map showing the location of the subject site. As you can see, it is bordered to the north and to the west by the city of Reno, and on the east and south sides, there is existing medium-density suburban county development, and it is directly south of Swan Lake. Some more background, this parcel is currently undeveloped. It is relatively flat, and it falls within the Lemon Valley Suburban Character Management Area, which is one of the designated growth areas of the North Valleys Area Plan, and it has a mix of zonings that came before you not too long ago. Here is a site plan showing the proposed tentative map. As you can see, there are 85 residential lots and then a common open space area that includes amenities, including a pocket park, a trail, and then the required retention basins for onsite water retention. Special setbacks are proposed as part of this request. They would be 15 feet from the front, 20 feet for garages, 15 feet from the rear, and five feet from the sides. This is a common open space development, which is a type of development that allows for variation in lot size and setbacks in order to provide a public benefit, including preserving and providing open space, achieving a more efficient use of land, and encouraging a sense of community. This is done through the dedication of common open space. This applicant is proposing 5.27 acres of common open space as part of this request, which is about a quarter of the subject site. While a common open space development allows flexibility in the design, the maximum density is that that is allowed by zoning. The table on the top shows the density calculation for the site. A total of 90 units would be allowed, and 85 are proposed. Here's a site plan that shows those benefits that would provide that sense of community, including the pocket park, the trails that go around the subject site and would connect with sidewalks along the two adjoining roadways, and then landscaping. One thing I want to bring attention to that this site plan demonstrates is compliance with the North Valleys Area Plan Policy 6.1 that requires a 30-foot open space buffer between proposed residential lots and existing county residential development. The minimum that the applicant has proposed is 50 feet, in many places is wider than that, which meets that minimum requirement of the area plan. There is also, what's not shown here, is that a tree will be required to be planted in every front yard of the residential lots to fulfill land use and transportation element policy 17.5, which requires shade to facilitate better pedestrian and multimodal transportation. To talk about the grading element of this request, again, it's for 55,000 cubic total yards of fill, 35,000 cubic yards of that being imported, and then 20,000 cubic yards of cut. The entire site will be disturbed, which is about 20 acres. And what this cross-section shows, I know it's hard to see, but it is in the application package as well, is that in general, the residential lots will be slightly elevated, and then the stormwater retention facilities will be cut into the existing grade. All the grading and drainage proposed meets the standards of Article 438, which governs grading, and of course, would be thoroughly reviewed when a grading permit was submitted, but staff has no concerns about the proposed grading. For roadway facilities, the applicant worked closely with the engineering division and with planning to identify that the site would be accessed from Fleetwood Drive and from Limber Pine Drive. Calculations were done for traffic volumes at 2026 and 2050, and it shows that all affected intersections will maintain an acceptable level of service, which for local roadways is C or above. As you might remember from the master plan amendment request, RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, has indicated that improvements are planned for Lemon Drive, widening it starting at Fleetwood Drive in the coming years, in the next couple of years, and so we will also be seeing improvements to the regional roadway facility in this area. Sewer service will be provided by the Lemon Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant. Washoe County has issued an intend-to-serv letter, and there's capacity at this plant. And what this site plan shows is the point of connection with the existing system, which is close to the subject site on Fleetwood Drive. A neighborhood meeting was held for this project in February of last year. Nine members of the public attended and asked questions regarding backyard access to the existing houses, about traffic impacts, and height of houses in the subdivision. I believe the applicant has also reached out to neighbors in the interim to provide constant communication. 191 property owners were noticed within 750 feet of the subject site, and you all received some modified conditions today, a red line and a clean copy of the new conditions. The reason you did is because the applicant, engineering and planning, met yesterday after the applicant had found that developers looking at these conditions had some concerns about, not necessarily the content, but about the wording and the lack of clarity. And so we met and went through those conditions together. What we did find was that some of the language that is in our standard conditions is a bit old. It hasn't been revisited comprehensively in a while, and so we made adjustments to provide more clarity, to reduce repetition, and to not condition things that are already required by code. These changes, again, are provided to you in a red line and are more phrasing, more about phrasing, and not substantive in nature, and so, so minor changes, I'm happy to answer any questions about them, and we also have a representative from the engineering division who can answer questions about those changes and about any other engineering aspects of this project. In general, staff found that all the findings for approval could be made, and because of that, recommended approval with conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Is the applicant present? Would they like to make a presentation?
Yes and yes.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Crater, and I am the applicant, and Kat did a great job with the presentation, so I'm going to skip forward and just highlight a couple of things here. I think a couple of the most important aspects of this project is, one, the amount of community outreach that we did with the neighborhood, and in fact, with this tentative map, we reached out again and notified all of the adjoining neighbors in the county, and offered to either meet live in person via Zoom meeting, via phone call, emails, whatever. So we really made an effort to make sure that we were obtaining all the input and comments from the neighborhood that we could. But what I like most about this project goes back to the original, with the zoning that you saw a few months ago, creating that buffer to the existing county residents with that open space zoning, and that's where the retention facilities are located, as well as the buffer areas along the south and east property lines, and then the MDS zoning further in, and finally, the high-density suburban zoning adjacent to the city of Reno property to the west. But a couple of the things I like is the park acts as a great buffer to the existing homes to the south within the county, and that's a little change from what we originally had envisioned. Originally, we had the park more central to the community, but I think this is great just in terms of the buffering, and it literally also increased the size of the park by about 50%, so it's almost an acre now. It's going to be a wonderful little pocket park for the neighborhood. We're also able to create open space right on the corner of the future Lear Boulevard in Pan America. No one wants to live right on the corner of the busy street, so we're able to pull the homes back further, and I think that'll be a nice element of the project, to see some landscaping on that corner as you drive by instead of a single-family home. And the house that's closest to the existing residence is right on the north end of the infiltration basin, and it's more than 50 feet away in terms of the buffer area, but we're able to make that a much larger lot. That lot is 7,750 square feet, so much more compatible with some of those 9,000 and 12,000 square foot lots within the county. So I think we worked really hard on this project to address the concerns of the community, and that's reflected, too, again, in the landscape plan. Kat mentioned that, yes, every home will have a tree, at least one tree, and in fact, that's one of the conditions of approval that we work with staff on. There was actually an old condition of approval that said, "No tree canopy shall overhang a public street," and that clearly wasn't the intent. The intent was to make sure that trees don't interfere with utilities, that don't block the sidewalk, so we clarified that, because obviously, we want tree canopies overhanging county streets for shade and cooling effects. So those were the types of changes that we made in the conditions, and I suspect that the county moving forward will make a lot of those now standard conditions. They're now updated, and I think it's good for everybody, the community and the developers. So that concludes my presentation. We've had, again, a tremendous amount of public outreach. We've had five hearings to date now, including this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but hoping for approval of this little project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, let's open up public comment for this item.
In chambers, I have Gay Hollenberger.
Let's see if I know how to do this. I've been in contact with-
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Gay Hollenberger, and I'm one of the residents that backside the new development being made. And I've been in contact with Kenneth since the beginning. I went to the first public hearing that they had at Lemon Valley Elementary, and we were supposed to have a meeting last month, and I met with Kenneth and Kat and brought up some questions that they've discussed and gave me some answers to. I also, again, found out about the new map versus the old one that we got at the meeting, and do I put it somewhere so it shows?
Brandon, can you turn on the Elmo?
Okay. So this top one was the one that I got at the Lemon Valley meeting. This is my house right here.
Please try to speak more into the microphone. There you go, perfect.
This is my house right here, and I was told that this was going to be an access walkway, because there's a couple of residents along here. We all have dogs, and we let them wander and run out there. So I was, of course, I don't like the development, but it's going to happen. So I was okay with that. Then when I met with Kenneth and Kat, they got the new design to me with the trees and kind of a walkway, and now we have a street where there wasn't one before, the new street. And I have two lab pups that are teenagers, so they're still kind of childlike. The only thing I was wondering, is there any way to maybe put a fence decorative to go with the landscaping to keep, if I decide to run the dogs on this access walkway that I know has got a gate and whatnot, so that they're not running into the street? Because it's kind of hard to keep two labs behaving when they're in the teenage mode. So I was just wondering, along this walkway trail, if we could put a protective fence for those of us that like to run our dogs, because I run my dogs all the way out towards Swan Lake now and whatnot. And so that's the other thing. And like I said, I've been in contact with Kenneth. He knows I don't like it, and he also knows I know what's going to happen, and he's been very nice to work with, and we communicate well. So that's the only other thing I wanted to bring up with this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There is no further public comment in chambers, and there are no hands raised via Zoom.
Okay, we'll close down the public commentary, bring it back to the board for questions. Do we have any questions for the applicant or the planner?
This is Lynda Kennedy. I have a question.
Okay.
I read some about the-
I read some about the flooding. Could you speak a little bit more about the potential flooding? I know that area has flooded in the past. About any concerns about this area?
Good evening. Janelle Thomas, Senior Licensed Engineer, for the record. Yes, this area has been in the floodplain. There is just a very small portion of the project site, which is located within the FEMA-designated floodplain, and we do require mitigation to construct within those floodplain areas.
Did that answer your question, Linda?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question for Kat. Kat, was there any discussion about putting a fence along that roadway that the lady spoke about?
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. There was no discussion of requiring it from a planning perspective necessarily. Really, the intention of that buffer area is, one, to provide the buffer between the existing homes and the proposed development, and, two, to provide the recreational space for residents of that development and for the surrounding neighbors. Whether or not there's a fence there, it provides those benefits. So that would be planning's perspective on it.
Okay. Do you think the applicant may be willing to put something? We had a public comment about a fence along the roadway. I'm sure you heard it. Can you speak to that?
I did. Can you turn on the overhead display again, please? As Kat said, that open space really acts as a buffer, and we could look at maybe putting a split-rail fence just in this area. But just to point out that this trail was also going to serve as continuity on the sidewalk. So even if you put a fence, there's going to be two openings, so I would want everybody to be aware of that, because obviously, the pedestrians need to get through. And when we met with Gay, I think we did talk about this a little bit, and obviously, there's tons of open space around this area. So we could look at that, but I just wanted to point out that we will have those two openings to make sure that people can access that trail. But if that's the pleasure of the Planning Commission, that's not the end of the world, so.
Okay.
Also, quickly, the flooding only occurs actually on Lear Boulevard. None of the actual property fled, so I wanted to point that out, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we need to stipulate that fence. I think, in good faith, you guys can work that out. Thank you for that. Do we have any other comments or questions or anything? Okay. If we don't, then I'll entertain a motion.
I have no further public comment in chambers. No hands raised on Zoom.
We already called public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was talking about the board.
I apologize.
That's okay. It's a big deal.
Chair Pierce, Commissioner Doncic, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved tentative map, tentative subdivision map case number WTM 23-001 for Crater Consulting Group, PC, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all 10 findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110 608.25, with the amended document that we were presented today.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Ms. Sharon Nelson, a second.
She beat you. Pardon?
For the record.
Yeah. Commissioner Nelson seconded that. That's what I heard. She beat you to it. So, all right. So we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item number 10, Future Agenda Items. Do we have anything? No?
Actually, no.
You do?
It'd be a request for staff.
Okay. And we'll move on to B, a request for information from staff.
I appreciate that planning staff worked with the applicant to update our standard language on conditions. I wonder if staff can come back to us with a report in the future, next month, or whenever you guys are ready to talk about updating those standard conditions overall.
We've had several discussions. Those are all boilerplate conditions that were being changed, and quite frankly, many of them are in need of updating, and so we will have that discussion. I don't know that we want to agendize that as a topic, or we can provide you with a memo of sorts. It's really up to the purview of this commission how you wish to.
A memo would be fine, sure, just highlighting what we're changing.
You got it.
Some kind of update. Anything else? Okay. We'll move on to number 11, Director and Legal Counsel items. Report from previous commissioner items.
Yeah, I have a couple to report on. The Wood Creek Development Code Amendment, which was relatively recently heard by the Planning Commission. That went to the County Commission on the 20th of February, and it was approved on the second reading. Just some upcoming items that will be heard by the County Commission on the March 19th agenda. You may remember the Thompson Master Plan and Regulatory Zone Amendments that were heard by the Planning Commission and denied by the Planning Commission. Those have been appealed and will be heard on the 19th. Also, the second reading of the Code Amendment, which we call the Package of Affordable, the first phase of Affordable Housing Package. That will be heard also by the BCC for a second reading at the March 19th County Commission meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything from legal?
Nothing from me today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, for the record, as of 6:35, Commissioner Kennedy no longer is on Zoom.
Duly noted. Thank you. All right. That moves on to number 12, Public Comment, General Public Comment. Do we have any general public comment?
There is no general public comment in chambers. No general public comment on Zoom.
Okay. Without hesitation, then we'll go up, move on to item number 13. Meeting is adjourned at 6:37.